And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thank you for attending tonight's City Council meeting. For those who are attending remotely, the camera in the council chambers is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we are using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach the point in the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand with the pledge of allegiance. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Skelly.
Here.
Counselor Dilaba.
Here.
Counselor Fisher.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Powers.
Here.
Counselor Riche.
Here.
Counselor Scamperly.
Here.
Quorum present.
I will make a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss medical, financial, credit, or employment history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
A second.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Fisher.
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy.
Yes.
Counselor Powers.
Yes.
Counselor Riche.
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly.
Here.
Mayor Skelly.
Yes.
Counselor Dilaba.
Yes.
Approved.
Mayor, I'd like to ask that City Councilor Angela Graham join us.
Yes. Good.
Thank you.
Good morning.
I think I did.
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 Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.[315.81][316.00][S18. Thank you. Thank you.[317.81][318.00][S18. Thank you. Thank you.[319.81][320.00][S18. Thank you. Thank you.[321.81][322.00][S18. Thank you. Thank you.[323.81][324.00][S18. Thank you.[324.81][325.00][S19. Thank you.[325.81][326.00][S18. Thank you.[326.81][327.00][S19. Thank you.[327.81][328.00][S18. Thank you.[328.81][329.00][S19. Thank you.[329.81][330.00][S18. Thank you.[330.81][331.00][S19. Thank you.[331.81][332.00][S18. Thank you.[332.81][333.00][S19. Thank you.[333.81][334.00][S18. Thank you.[334.81][335.00][S19. Thank you.[335.81][336.00][S18. Thank you.[336.81][337.00][S19. Thank you.[337.81][338.00][S18. Thank you.[338.81][339.00][S19. Thank you.[339.81][340.00][S18. Thank you.[340.81][341.00][S19. Thank you.[341.81][342.00][S18. Thank you.[342.81][343.00][S19. Thank you.[343.81][344.00][S18. Thank you.[344.81][345.00][S19. Thank you.[345.81][346.00][S18. Thank you.[346.81][347.00][S19. Thank you.[347.81][348.00][S18. Thank you.[348.81][349.00][S19. Thank you.[349.81][350.00][S18. Thank you.[350.81][351.00][S19. Thank you.[351.81][352.00][S18. Thank you.[352.81][353.00][S19. Thank you.[353.81][354.00][S18. Thank you.[354.81][355.00][S19. Thank you.[355.81][356.00][S18. Thank you.[356.81][357.00][S19. Thank you.[357.81][358.00][S18. Thank you.[358.81][359.00][S19. Thank you.[359.81][360.00][S18. Thank you.[360.81][361.00][S19. Thank you.[361.81][362.00][S18. Thank you.[362.81][363.00][S19. Thank you.[363.81][364.00][S18. Thank you.[364.81][365.00][S19. Thank you.[365.81][366.00][S18. Thank you.[366.81][367.00][S19. Thank you.[367.81][368.00][S18. Thank you.[368.81][369.00][S19. Thank you.[369.81][370.00][S18. Thank you.[370.81][371.00][S19. Thank you.[371.81][372.00][S18. Thank you.[372.81][373.00][S19. Thank you.[373.81][374.00][S18. Thank you.[374.81][375.00][S19. Thank you.[375.81][376.00][S18. Thank you.[376.81][377.00][S19. Thank you.[377.81][378.00][S18. Thank you.[378.81][379.00][S19. Thank you.[379.81][380.00][S18. Thank you.[380.81][381.00][S19. Thank you.[381.81][382.00][S18. Thank you.[382.81][383.00][S19. Thank you.[383.81][384.00][S18. Thank you.[384.81][385.00][S19. Thank you.[385.81][386.00][S18. Thank you.[386.81][387.00][S19. Thank you.[387.81][388.00][S18. Thank you.[388.81][389.00][S19. Thank you.[389.81][390.00][S18. Thank you.[390.81][391.00][S19. Thank you.[391.81][392.00][S18. Thank you.[392.81][393.00][S19. Thank you.[393.81][394.00][S18. Thank you.[394.81][395.00][S19. Thank you.[395.81][396.00][S18. Thank you.[396.81][397.00][S19. Thank you.[397.81][398.00][S18. Thank you.[398.81][399.00][S19. Thank you.[399.81][400.00][S18. Thank you.[400.81][401.00][S19. Thank you.[401.81][402.00][S18. Thank you.[402.81][403.00][S19. Thank you.[403.81][404.00][S18. Thank you.[404.81][405.00][S19. Thank you.[405.81][406.00][S18. Thank you.[406.81][407.00][S19. Thank you.[407.81][408.00][S18. Thank you.[408.81][409.00][S19. Thank you.[409.81][410.00][S18. Thank you.[410.81][411.00][S19. Thank you.[411.81][412.00][S18. Thank you.[412.81][413.00][S19. Thank you.[413.81][414.00][S18. Thank you.[414.81][415.00][S19. Thank you.[415.81][416.00][S18. Thank you.[416.81][417.00][S19. Thank you.[417.81][418.00][S18. Thank you.[418.81][419.00][S19. Thank you.[419.81][420.00][S18. Thank you.[420.81][421.00][S19. Thank you.[421.81][422.00][S18. Thank you.[422.81][423.00][S19. Thank you.[423.81][424.00][S18. Thank you.[424.81][425.00][S19. Thank you.[425.81][426.00][S18. Thank you.[426.81][427.00][S19. Thank you.[427.81][428.00][S18. Thank you.[428.81][429.00][S19. Thank you.[429.81][430.00][S18. Thank you.[430.81][431.00][S19. Thank you.[431.81][432.00][S18. Thank you.[432.81][433.00][S19. Thank you.[433.81][434.00][S18. Thank you.[434.81][435.00][S19. Thank you.[435.81][436.00][S18. Thank you.[436.81][437.00][S19. Thank you.[437.81][438.00][S18. Thank you.[438.81][439.00][S19. Thank you.[439.81][440.00][S18. Thank you.[440.81][441.00][S19. Thank you.[441.81][442.00][S18. Thank you.[442.81][443.00][S19. Thank you.[443.81][444.00][S18. Thank you.[444.81][445.00][S19. Thank you.[445.81][446.00][S18. Thank you.[446.81][447.00][S19. Thank you.[447.81][448.00][S18. Thank you.[448.81][449.00][S19. Thank you.[449.81][450.00][S18. Thank you.[450.81][451.00][S19. Thank you.[451.81][452.00][S18. Thank you.[452.81][453.00][S19. Thank you.[453.81][454.00][S18. Thank you.[454.81][455.00][S19. Thank you.[455.81][456.00][S18. Thank you.[456.81][457.00][S19. Thank you.[457.81][458.00][S18. Thank you.[458.81][459.00][S19. Thank you.[459.81][460.00][S18. Thank you.[460.81][461.00][S19. Thank you.[461.81][462.00][S18. Thank you.[462.81][463.00][S19. Thank you.[463.81][464.00][S18. Thank you.[464.81][465.00][S19. Thank you.[465.81][466.00][S18. Thank you.[466.81][467.00][S19. Thank you.[467.81][468.00][S18. Thank you.[468.81][469.00][S19. Thank you.[469.81][470.00][S18. Thank you.[470.81][471.00][S19. Thank you.[471.81][472.00][S18. Thank you.[472.81][473.00][S19. Thank you.[473.81][474.00][S18. Thank you.[474.81][475.00][S19. Thank you.[475.81][476.00][S18. Thank you.[476.81][477.00][S19. Thank you.[477.81][478.00][S18. Thank you.[478.81][479.00][S19. Thank you.[479.81][480.00][S18. Thank you.[480.81][481.00][S19. Thank you.[481.81][482.00][S18. Thank you.[482.81][483.00][S19. Thank you.[483.81][484.00][S18. Thank you.[484.81][485.00][S19. Thank you.[485.81][486.00][S18. Thank you.[486.81][487.00][S19. Thank you.[487.81][488.00][S18. Thank you.[488.81][489.00][S19. Thank you.[489.81][490.00][S18. Thank you.[490.81][491.00][S19. Thank you.[491.81][492.00][S18. Thank you.[492.81][493.00][S19. Thank you.[493.81][494.00][S18. Thank you.[494.81][495.00][S19. Thank you.[495.81][496.00][S18. Thank you.[496.81][497.00][S19. Thank you.[497.81][498.00][S18. Thank you.[498.81][499.00][S19. Thank you.[499.81][500.00][S18. Thank you.[500.81][501.00][S19. Thank you.[501.81][502.00][S18. Thank you.[502.81][503.00][S19. Thank you.[503.81][504.00][S18. Thank you.[504.81][505.00][S19. Thank you.[505.81][506.00][S18. Thank you.[506.81][507.00][S19. Thank you.[507.81][508.00][S18. Thank you.[508.81][509.00][S19. Thank you.[509.81][510.00][S18. Thank you.[510.81][511.00][S19. Thank you.[511.81][512.00][S18. Thank you.[512.81][513.00][S19. Thank you.[513.81][514.00][S18. Thank you.[514.81][515.00][S19. Thank you.[515.81][516.00][S18. Thank you.[516.81][517.00][S19. Thank you.[517.81][518.00][S18. Thank you.[518.81][519.00][S19. Thank you.[519.81][520.00][S18. Thank you.[520.81][521.00][S19. Thank you.[521.81][522.00][S18. Thank you.[522.81][523.00][S19. Thank you.[523.81][524.00][S18. Thank you.[524.81][525.00][S19. Thank you.[525.81][526.00][S18. Thank you.[526.81][527.00][S19. Thank you.[527.81][528.00][S18. Thank you.[528.81][529.00][S19. Thank you.[529.81][530.00][S18. Thank you.[530.81][531.00][S19. Thank you.[531.81][532.00][S18. Thank you.[532.81][533.00][S19. Thank you.[533.81][534.00][S18. Thank you.[534.81][535.00][S19. Thank you.[535.81][536.00][S18. Thank you.[536.81][537.00][S19. Thank you.[537.81][538.00][S18. Thank you.[538.81][539.00][S19. Thank you.[539.81][540.00][S18. Thank you.[540.81][541.00][S19. Thank you.[541.81][542.00][S18. Thank you.[542.81][543.00][S19. Thank you.[543.81][544.00][S18. Thank you.[544.81][545.00][S19. Thank you.[545.81][546.00][S18. Thank you.[546.81][547.00][S19. Thank you.[547.81][548.00][S18. Thank you.[548.81][549.00][S19. Thank you.[549.81][550.00][S18. Thank you.[550.81][551.00][S19. Thank you.[551.81][552.00][S18. Thank you.[552.81][553.00][S19. Thank you.[553.81][554.00][S18. Thank you.[554.81][555.00][S19. Thank you.[555.81][556.00][S18. Thank you.[556.81][557.00][S19. Thank you.[557.81][558.00][S18. Thank you.[558.81][559.00][S19. Thank you.[559.81][560.00][S18. Thank you.[560.81][561.00][S19. Thank you.[561.81][562.00][S18. Thank you.[562.81][563.00][S19. Thank you.[563.81][564.00][S18. Thank you.[564.81][565.00][S19. Thank you.[565.81][566.00][S18. Thank you.[566.81][567.00][S19. Thank you.[567.81][568.00][S18. Thank you.[568.81][569.00][S19. Thank you.[569.81][570.00][S18. Thank you.[570.81][571.00][S19. Thank you.[571.81][572.00][S18. Thank you.[572.81][573.00][S19. Thank you.[573.81][574.00][S18. Thank you.[574.81][575.00][S19. Thank you.[575.81][576.00][S18. Thank you.[576.81][577.00][S19. Thank you.[577.81][578.00][S18. Thank you.[578.81][579.00][S19. Thank you.[579.81][580.00][S18. Thank you.[580.81][581.00][S19. Thank you.[581.81][582.00][S18. Thank you.[582.81][583.00][S19. Thank you.[583.81][584.00][S18. Thank you.[584.81][585.00][S19. Thank you.[585.81][586.00][S18. Thank you.[586.81][587.00][S19. Thank you.[587.81][588.00][S18. Thank you.[588.81][589.00][S19. Thank you.[589.81][590.00][S18. Thank you.[590.81][591.00][S19. Thank you.[591.81][592.00][S18. Thank you.[592.81][593.00][S19. Thank you.[593.81][594.00][S18. Thank you.[594.81][595.00][S19. Thank you.[595.81][596.00][S18. Thank you.[596.81][597.00][S19. Thank you.[597.81][598.00][S18. Thank you.[598.81][599.00][S19. Thank you.[599.81][600.00][S18. Thank you.[600.81][601.00][S19. Thank you.[601.81][602.00][S18. Thank you.[602.81][603.00][S19. Thank you.[603.81][604.00][S18. Thank you.[604.81][605.00][S19. Thank you.[605.81][606.00][S18. Thank you.[606.81][607.00][S19. Thank you.[607.81][608.00][S18. Thank you.[608.81][609.00][S19. Thank you.[609.81][610.00][S18. Thank you.[610.81][611.00][S19. Thank you.[611.81][612.00][S18. Thank you.[612.81][613.00][S19. Thank you.[613.81][614.00][S18. Thank you.[614.81][615.00][S19. Thank you.[615.81][616.00][S18. Thank you.[616.81][617.00][S19. Thank you.[617.81][618.00][S18. Thank you.[618.81][619.00][S19. Thank you.[619.81][620.00][S18. Thank you.[620.81][621.00][S19. Thank you.[621.81][622.00][S18. Thank you.[622.81][623.00][S19. Thank you.[623.81][624.00][S18. Thank you.[624.81][625.00][S19. Thank you.[625.81][626.00][S18. Thank you.[626.81][627.00][S19. Thank you.[627.81][628.00][S18. Thank you.[628.81][629.00][S19. Thank you.[629.81][630.00][S18. Thank you.[630.81][631.00][S19. Thank you.[631.81][632.00][S18. Thank you.[632.81][633.00][S19. Thank you.[633.81][634.00][S18. Thank you.[634.81][635.00][S19. Thank you.[635.81][636.00][S18. Thank you.[636.81][637.00][S19. Thank you.[637.81][638.00][S18. Thank you.[638.81][639.00][S19. Thank you.[639.81][640.00][S18. Thank you.[640.81][641.00][S19. Thank you.[641.81][642.00][S18. Thank you.[642.81][643.00][S19. Thank you.[643.81][644.00][S18. Thank you.[644.81][645.00][S19. Thank you.[645.81][646.00][S18. Thank you.[646.81][647.00][S19. Thank you.[647.81][648.00][S18. Thank you.[648.81][649.00][S19. Thank you.[649.81][650.00][S18. Thank you.[650.81][651.00][S19. Thank you.[651.81][652.00][S18. Thank you.[652.81][653.00][S19. Thank you.[653.81][654.00][S18. Thank you.[654.81][655.00][S19. Thank you.[655.81][656.00][S18. Thank you.[656.81][657.00][S19. Thank you.[657.81][658.00][S18. Thank you.[658.81][659.00][S19. Thank you.[659.81][660.00][S18. Thank you.[660.81][661.00][S19. Thank you.[661.81][662.00][S18. Thank you.[662.81][663.00][S19. Thank you.[663.81][664.00][S18. Thank you.[664.81][665.00][S19. Thank you.[665.81][666.00][S18. Thank you.[666.81][667.00][S19. Thank you.[667.81][668.00][S18. Thank you.[668.81][669.00][S19. Thank you.[669.81][670.00][S18. Thank you.[670.81][671.00][S19. Thank you.[671.81][672.00][S18. Thank you.[672.81][673.00][S19. Thank you.[673.81][674.00][S18. Thank you.[674.81][675.00][S19. Thank you.[675.81][676.00][S18. Thank you.[676.81][677.00][S19. Thank you.[677.81][678.00][S18. Thank you.[678.81][679.00][S19. Thank you.[679.81][680.00][S18. Thank you.[680.81][681.00][S19. Thank you.[681.81][682.00][S18. Thank you.[682.81][683.00][S19. Thank you.[683.81][684.00][S18. Thank you.[684.81][685.00][S19. Thank you.[685.81][686.00][S18. Thank you.[686.81][687.00][S19. Thank you.[687.81][688.00][S18. Thank you.[688.81][689.00][S19. Thank you.[689.81][690.00][S18. Thank you.[690.81][691.00][S19. Thank you.[691.81][692.00][S18. Thank you.[692.81][693.00][S19. Thank you.[693.81][694.00][S18. Thank you.[694.81][695.00][S19. Thank you.[695.81][696.00][S18. Thank you.[696.81][697.00][S19. Thank you.[697.81][698.00][S18. Thank you.[698.81][699.00][S19. Thank you.[699.81][700.00][S18. Thank you.[700.81][701.00][S19. Thank you.[701.81][702.00][S18. Thank you.[702.81][703.00][S19. Thank you.[703.81][704.00][S18. Thank you.[704.81][705.00][S19. Thank you.[705.81][706.00][S18. Thank you.[706.81][707.00][S19. Thank you.[707.81][708.00][S18. Thank you.[708.81][709.00][S19. Thank you.[709.81][710.00][S18. Thank you.[710.81][711.00][S19. Thank you.[711.81][712.00][S18. Thank you.[712.81][713.00][S19. Thank you.[713.81][714.00][S18. Thank you.[714.81][715.00][S19. Thank you.[715.81][716.00][S18. Thank you.[716.81][717.00][S19. Thank you.[717.81][718.00][S18. Thank you.[718.81][719.00][S19. Thank you.[719.81][720.00][S18. Thank you.[720.81][721.00][S19. Thank you.[721.81][722.00][S18. Thank you.[722.81][723.00][S19. Thank you.[723.81][724.00][S18. Thank you.[724.81][725.00][S19. Thank you.[725.81][726.00][S18. Thank you.[726.81][727.00][S19. Thank you.[727.81][728.00][S18. Thank you.[728.81][729.00][S19. Thank you.[729.81][730.00][S18. Thank you.[730.81][731.00][S19. Thank you.[731.81][732.00][S18. Thank you.[732.81][733.00][S19. Thank you.[733.81][734.00][S18. Thank you.[734.81][735.00][S19. Thank you.[735.81][736.00][S18. Thank you.[736.81][737.00][S19. Thank you.[737.81][738.00][S18. Thank you.[738.81][739.00][S19. Thank you.[739.81][740.00][S18. Thank you.[740.81][741.00][S19. Thank you.[741.81][742.00][S18. Thank you.[742.81][743.00][S19. Thank you.[743.81][744.00][S18. Thank you.[744.81][745.00][S19. Thank you.[745.81][746.00][S18. Thank you.[746.81][747.00][S19. Thank you.[747.81][748.00][S18. Thank you.[748.81][749.00][S19. Thank you.[749.81][750.00][S18. Thank you.[750.81][751.00][S19. Thank you.[751.81][752.00][S18. Thank you.[752.81][753.00][S19. Thank you.[753.81][754.00][S18. Thank you.[754.81][755.00][S19. Thank you.[755.81][756.00][S18. Thank you.[756.81][757.00][S19. Thank you.[757.81][758.00][S18. Thank you.[758.81][759.00][S19. Thank you.[759.81][760.00][S18. Thank you.[760.81][761.00][S19. Thank you.[761.81][762.00][S18. Thank you.[762.81][763.00][S19. Thank you.[763.81][764.00][S18. Thank you.[764.81][765.00][S19. Thank you.[765.81][766.00][S18. Thank you.[766.81][767.00][S19. Thank you.[767.81][768.00][S18. Thank you.[768.81][769.00][S19. Thank you.[769.81][770.00][S18. Thank you.[770.81][771.00][S19. Thank you.[771.81][772.00][S18. Thank you.[772.81][773.00][S19. Thank you.[773.81][774.00][S18. Thank you.[774.81][775.00][S19. Thank you.[775.81][776.00][S18. Thank you.[776.81][777.00][S19. Thank you.[777.81][778.00][S18. Thank you.[778.81][779.00][S19. Thank you.[779.81][780.00][S18. Thank you.[780.81][781.00][S19. Thank you.[781.81][782.00][S18. Thank you.[782.81][783.00][S19. Thank you.[783.81][784.00][S18. Thank you.[784.81][785.00][S19. Thank you.[785.81][786.00][S18. Thank you.[786.81][787.00][S19. Thank you.[787.81][788.00][S18. Thank you.[788.81][789.00][S19. Thank you.[789.81][790.00][S18. Thank you.[790.81][791.00][S19. Thank you.[791.81][792.00][S18. Thank you.[792.81][793.00][S19. Thank you.[793.81][794.00][S18. Thank you.[794.81][795.00][S19. Thank you.[795.81][796.00][S18. Thank you.[796.81][797.00][S19. Thank you.[797.81][798.00][S18. Thank you.[798.81][799.00][S19. Thank you.[799.81][800.00][S18. Thank you.[800.81][801.00][S19. Thank you.[801.81][802.00][S18. Thank you.[802.81][803.00][S19. Thank you.[803.81][804.00][S18. Thank you.[804.81][805.00][S19. Thank you.[805.81][806.00][S18. Thank you.[806.81][807.00][S19. Thank you.[807.81][808.00][S18. Thank you.[808.81][809.00][S19. Thank you.[809.81][810.00][S18. Thank you.[810.81][811.00][S19. Thank you.[811.81][812.00][S18. Thank you.[812.81][813.00][S19. Thank you.[813.81][814.00][S18. Thank you.[814.81][815.00][S19. Thank you.[815.81][816.00][S18. Thank you.[816.81][817.00][S19. Thank you.[817.81][818.00][S18. Thank you.[818.81][819.00][S19. Thank you.[819.81][820.00][S18. Thank you.[820.81][821.00][S19. Thank you.[821.81][822.00][S18. Thank you.[822.81][823.00][S19. Thank you.[823.81][824.00][S18. Thank you.[824.81][825.00][S19. Thank you.[825.81][826.00][S18. Thank you.[826.81][827.00][S19. Thank you.[827.81][828.00][S18. Thank you.[828.81][829.00][S19. Thank you.[829.81][830.00][S18. Thank you.[830.81][831.00][S19. Thank you.[831.81][832.00][S18. Thank you.[832.81][833.00][S19. Thank you.[833.81][834.00][S18. Thank you.[834.81][835.00][S19. Thank you.[835.81][836.00][S18. Thank you.[836.81][837.00][S19. Thank you.[837.81][838.00][S18. Thank you.[838.81][839.00][S19. Thank you.[839.81][840.00][S18. Thank you.[840.81][841.00][S19. Thank you.[841.81][842.00][S18. Thank you.[842.81][843.00][S19. Thank you.[843.81][844.00][S18. Thank you.[844.81][845.00][S19. Thank you.[845.81][846.00][S18. Thank you.[846.81][847.00][S19. Thank you.[847.81][848.00][S18. Thank you.[848.81][849.00][S19. Thank you.[849.81][850.00][S18. Thank you.[850.81][851.00][S19. Thank you.[851.81][852.00][S18. Thank you.[852.81][853.00][S19. Thank you.[853.81][854.00][S18. Thank you.[854.81][855.00][S19. Thank you.[855.81][856.00][S18. Thank you.[856.81][857.00][S19. Thank you.[857.81][858.00][S18. Thank you.[858.81][859.00][S19. Thank you.[859.81][860.00][S18. Thank you.[860.81][861.00][S19. Thank you.[861.81][862.00][S18. Thank you.[862.81][863.00][S19. Thank you.[863.81][864.00][S18. Thank you.[864.81][865.00][S19. Thank you.[865.81][866.00][S18. Thank you.[866.81][867.00][S19. Thank you.[867.81][868.00][S18. Thank you.[868.81][869.00][S19. Thank you.[869.81][870.00][S18. Thank you.[870.81][872.00][S19. Thank you.[872.81][873.00][S18. Thank you.[873.81][874.00][S19. Thank you.[874.81][875.00][S18. Thank you.[875.81][876.00][S19. Thank you.[876.81][877.00][S18. Thank you.[877.81][878.00][S19. Thank you.[878.81][879.00][S18. Thank you.[879.81][880.00][S19. Thank you.[880.81][881.00][S18. Thank you.[881.81][882.00][S19. Thank you.[882.81][883.00][S18. Thank you.[883.81][884.00][S19. Thank you.[884.81][885.00][S18. Thank you.[885.81][886.00][S19. Thank you.[886.81][887.00][S18. Thank you.[887.81][888.00][S19. Thank you.[888.81][889.00][S18. Thank you.[889.81][890.00][S19. Thank you.[890.81][891.00][S18. Thank you.[891.81][892.00][S19. Thank you.[892.81][893.00][S18. Thank you.[893.81][894.00][S19. Thank you.[894.81][895.00][S18. Thank you.[895.81][896.00][S19. Thank you.[896.81][897.00][S18. Thank you.[897.81][898.00][S19. Thank you.[898.81][899.00][S18. Thank you.[899.81][900.00][S19. Thank you.[900.81][901.00][S18. Thank you.[901.81][902.00][S19. Thank you.[902.81][903.00][S18. Thank you.[903.81][904.00][S19. Thank you.[904.81][905.00][S18. Thank you.[905.81][906.00][S19. Thank you.[906.81][907.00][S18. Thank you.[907.81][908.00][S19. Thank you.[908.81][909.00][S18. Thank you.[909.81][910.00][S19. Thank you.[910.81][911.00][S18. Thank you.[911.81][912.00][S19. Thank you.[912.81][913.00][S18. Thank you.[913.81][914.00][S19. Thank you.[914.81][915.00][S18. Thank you.[915.81][916.00][S19. Thank you.[916.81][917.00][S18. Thank you.[917.81][918.00][S19. Thank you.[918.81][919.00][S18. Thank you.[919.81][920.00][S19. Thank you.[920.81][921.00][S18. Thank you.[921.81][922.00][S19. Thank you.[922.81][923.00][S18. Thank you.[923.81][924.00][S19. Thank you.[924.81][925.00][S18. Thank you.[925.81][926.00][S19. Thank you.[926.81][927.00][S18. Thank you.[927.81][928.00][S19. Thank you.[928.81][929.00][S18. Thank you.[929.81][930.00][S19. Thank you.[930.81][931.00][S18. Thank you.[931.81][932.00][S19. Thank you.[932.81][933.00][S18. Thank you.[933.81][934.00][S19. Thank you.[934.81][935.00][S18. Thank you.[935.81][936.00][S19. Thank you.[936.81][937.00][S18. Thank you.[937.81][938.00][S19. Thank you.[938.81][939.00][S18. Thank you.[939.81][940.00][S19. Thank you.[940.81][941.00][S18. Thank you.[941.81][942.00][S19. Thank you.[942.81][943.00][S18. Thank you.[943.81][944.00][S19. Thank you.[944.81][945.00][S18. Thank you.[945.81][946.00][S19. Thank you.[946.81][947.00][S18. Thank you.[947.81][948.00][S19. Thank you.[948.81][949.00][S18. Thank you.[949.81][950.00][S19. Thank you.[950.81][951.00][S18. Thank you.[951.81][952.00][S19. Thank you.[952.81][953.00][S18. Thank you.[953.81][954.00][S19. Thank you.[954.81][955.00][S18. Thank you.[955.81][956.00][S19. Thank you.[956.81][957.00][S18. Thank you.[957.81][958.00][S19. Thank you.[958.81][959.00][S18. Thank you.[959.81][960.00][S19. Thank you.[960.81][961.00][S18. Thank you.[961.81][962.00][S19. Thank you.[962.81][963.00][S18. Thank you.[963.81][964.00][S19. Thank you.[964.81][965.00][S18. Thank you.[965.81][966.00][S19. Thank you.[966.81][967.00][S18. Thank you.[967.81][968.00][S19. Thank you.[968.81][969.00][S18. Thank you.[969.81][970.00][S19. Thank you.[970.81][971.00][S18. Thank you.[971.81][972.00][S19. Thank you.[972.81][973.00][S18. Thank you.[973.81][974.00][S19. Thank you.[974.81][975.00][S18. Thank you.[975.81][976.00][S19. Thank you.[976.81][977.00][S18. Thank you.[977.81][978.00][S19. Thank you.[978.81][979.00][S18. Thank you.[979.81][980.00][S19. Thank you.[980.81][981.00][S18. Thank you.[981.81][982.00][S19. Thank you.[982.81][983.00][S18. Thank you.[983.81][984.00][S19. Thank you.[984.81][985.00][S18. Thank you.[985.81][986.00][S19. Thank you.[986.81][987.00][S18. Thank you.[987.81][988.00][S19. Thank you.[988.81][989.00][S18. Thank you.[989.81][990.00][S19. Thank you.[990.81][991.00][S18. Thank you.[991.81][992.00][S19. Thank you.[992.81][993.00][S18. Thank you.[993.81][994.00][S19. Thank you.[994.81][995.00][S18. Thank you.[995.81][996.00][S19. Thank you.[996.81][997.00][S18. Thank you.[997.81][998.00][S19. Thank you.[998.81][999.00][S18. Thank you.[999.81][1000.00][S19. Thank you.[1000.81][1001.00][S18. Thank you.[1001.81][1002.00][S19. Thank you.[1002.81][1003.00][S18. Thank you.[1003.81][1004.00][S19. Thank you.[1004.81][1005.00][S18. Thank you.[1005.81][1006.00][S19. Thank you.[1006.81][1007.00][S18. Thank you.[1007.81][1008.00][S19. Thank you.[1008.81][1009.00][S18. Thank you.[1009.81][1010.00][S19. Thank you.[1010.81][1011.00][S18. Thank you.[1011.81][1012.00][S19. Thank you.[1012.81][1013.00][S18. Thank you.[1013.81][1014.00][S19. Thank you.[1014.81][1015.00][S18. Thank you.[1015.81][1016.00][S19. Thank you.[1016.81][1017.00][S18. Thank you.[1017.81][1018.00][S19. Thank you.[1018.81][1019.00][S18. Thank you.[1019.81][1020.00][S19. Thank you.[1020.81][1021.00][S18. Thank you.[1021.81][1022.00][S19. Thank you.[1022.81][1023.00][S18. Thank you.[1023.81][1024.00][S19. Thank you.[1024.81][1025.00][S18. Thank you.[1025.81][1026.00][S19. Thank you.[1026.81][1027.00][S18. Thank you.[1027.81][1028.00][S19. Thank you.[1028.81][1029.00][S18. Thank you.
Let the record reflect that upon returning from executive session, all members of council are still present. And this brings us to items in council. Our first item of business is a resolution to accept the 2023 preliminary general fund budget. That was tabled at the November first, 2022 special council meeting. And I will make a motion to take that resolution off table.
Second that.
Have a second. I believe our interim city manager Andrea Smith would like to brief council on the 2023 preliminary budget.
We're going to read the resolution and then you can discuss it. Where is required by the city charter, the city manager has submitted a preliminary general fund budget for the fiscal year 2023. To city council honor before November first, 2022. Now therefore be resolved that the city council hereby accepts the planner budget. Preliminary general fund budget and directs the preliminary general fund budget to be filed with the city clerk and the city comptroller.
I'll move that. A second. Think it already was moved and seconded wasn't?
No, that was to take it off the table.
Oh.
Well, Kathy, would you please call the roll? For discussion.
Yeah, I think she's gonna do a presentation.
Oh, you're okay, you got more?
I just wanted to give you the highlights of the memo that I provided. Um, I wanted to articulate that this budget proposes a 12% increase in property taxes. It estimates a revenue of $2.5 million in sales tax, which is a reduction from sales tax in 2022. It does reduce the workforce by 10 full-time positions. It would call for not opening the municipal pool. It does account for a 19% increase in healthcare costs.
I'm sorry, I missed what you said about the pool.
It does not include opening the municipal pool. And it does include $910,000 of non-renewable income revenue sources. 70,000 from CHIPS, 90,000 in ARPA funding and 750,000 in general fund money. That's my overall summary for you.
Thank you.
Just in your, in your letter. Paragraph four. It talks about the constitutional tax limit.
Yes.
I think they're called exclusions, not exceptions. And, um, paragraph five. The very end of that paragraph says property tax assessment, $135 increase on a $70,000 home. Property tax increase rate, not assessment.
On a, on a 71, $71,000 home, the increase would be at a 12% increase as projected. It would be a difference of $135.36.
But not of property tax assessment.
No.
Property tax increase.
Increase, right.
Um. And I think the most important thing for people to understand is the problem that we're facing is that. The county made the decision, St. Lawrence County. And, you know, a few individuals, there was for 30 years a formula in place that. Guaranteed the city 6% of all the county sales tax receipts. And they weren't going to do that. And that started in 2019, those discussions. And they wanted us to go to the formula they have with villages and towns. Which is based on assessment population, which was going to cost us $2 million. So we decided to preempt and collect our own sales tax, which was previously done. Before the agreement was put in place 30 years ago. And that's really the problem with this budget we're, we're facing. 2.5 million dollar loss in one of our major revenue lines. So these are the, these are the challenges that, you know, we face and, uh, that we need to work on and resolve. But that's, that's the crux of the problem.
So I'm not happy with this budget. I'm not happy with the cuts of police. I've expressed that at all. I don't think any cut with police is, should be happening right now. Uh, I, I'd like to see the most efficient proposal with the fire department, short term and long term. In this budget, so just my two cents there.
Quick, quick question, possibly for Angela here. Do we have any idea what the sales tax calculations might be from January to March 31 of this year? Prior to us preempting?
Yeah, there were like 300,000 a month. They were wicked high compared to what we typically take, which is around.
I mean, I, from what I understand, if, correct me if I'm wrong, we wouldn't see those numbers probably from taxation and finance until probably when maybe February. Is that a fair assessment?
If you're talking January, December through February 2022. You were still on the county sharing plan. So the sales and property terms, city limits are now again. You don't have that.
Right, so am I, my, that's, I guess, do we have any ideas for what that's going to look like?
We do not, and we will not know that final quarter until that quarter in February. The April timeframe. That, that quarter that came in, December, January, February. We'll be able to have a very precise calculation of the city sales.
April of 23. Previously I had asked for appropriations and, um. Fund balances for the unappropriated funds and the appropriated funds for the general water and, you know, the three major. Budgets that we're dealing with here in our city budget and, you know, without an audit and going off a number from last year and a general fund number. Uh, I, I, I'm perplexed to, to accept this budget at this time, just based off the fact that there's a lot of valuable information that.
I believe that Angela is prepared to speak to that.
2021, we ended with an unaudited balance and I'm going to round the numbers, um, in the general fund of 6.1 million. The water fund would be 2.5 million and the sewer fund would be approximately 3 million. We can estimate what the, that fund balance number won't yet be truly evaluated until December 31st at the close of the city's financial records. So if we assume all funds break even. Um, knowing the appropriations that were done in the July board meeting and I've worked that. Um, fund balance forward, we would take our 6.1 million in the general fund. We have an appropriated fund balance of 2.4 million. And this budget calls for $750,000 appropriated appropriation of that fund balance. That will be.
Of the 2.4.
I'll, I'll start again, so we had a 6.1 coming out of 2021. We appropriated 2.4 to cover the 2022 expenditures. And we're estimating that we will need to appropriate 750,000 more for the 2023 expenditures. So the remaining fund balance we could anticipate at the end of 2023 as an estimate would be 2.6 million at this point. Obviously subject to change. Um, if we use the minimum fund balance approach of two months of revenue. We would expect to see, retain an approximate fund balance of 2.2 to 2.3 million. So the effect of appropriating 750,000 in this budget, what we've already committed out of the two, 2022 expenditures. Leaves you about 375,000 of. Surplus fund balance, if you want to use that term, taking you into 2024, not a lot of room there. And I, I will forward this schedule on to city manager Andrea Smith, so she could share it with all of you. Um, it's all detailed out here.
Yes, in writing would be great, and that includes the water and the sewer funds as well?
It does, it does, correct.
Thanks. And Andrea, the budget doesn't make any changes, the preliminary budget you put together to the water and sewer fund budgets, which we've already accepted.
Correct.
So citizens are looking at a 25% increase in the sewer rate. What about the water rate?
There's a projected 4% increase in the water rate.
Those are all up for discussion still, right? I mean, even though it was accepted, we're still discussing all three of those funds.
Yes.
And that's assuming everything that the numbers you gave me are assuming no additional revenue. For the rest of the year.
No additional revenue in surplus of what has been budgeted. And in, in a budget work session, I think it would be worth walking through that. Um, just to ensure that we're all on the same page. And how that calculation steps through. The city finances.
You know, I'm being opinionless about this, but any, any possibility we could have that audit anytime soon?
I reached out to the auditor and I have, I'm awaiting a response.
You now has your information though?
There is some that the city has yet, has a need to provide them, that is correct. Um, we, the focus of the comptroller's office has been this budget.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's a. You know, spectacular budget, but we have to have a starting point, so I'm, I'm willing to accept it tonight. And just, you know, just for discussion and for our workshops and for public comment, and I think that's the right way to go.
I don't like either one of them. I think, uh, I, I, in the end, I think we can balance this out. I think we need to revisit our, our. Where we've almost committed to the bonding of a couple of projects. Um, maybe we bond for some of it. I mean, if you're raising your property tax, it's, you know, you might as well bond for some of it. And at least the constitutional tax limit stays down, even though it's, we're helping it. Um, but we took a lot of the 6.1 million out to pay for a lot of the debt. So, and we went up, we, we, in the last two years, we've paid off 2, $2 million of debt and then another. 800,000 of the county, so I mean, we spent a lot of money. Um, but we're not, it's not gone yet, so we need to look at that. We do need a starting point.
On the other half of the, the last son of the sales tax too. Um, I thought that when we voted to preempt. And accept the half of the penny, that we had instructed. The city manager at that time to work with our attorneys. To draft legislation to get the other half sent.
I don't remember.
We did.
Yeah, we did. I, I said it specifically that.
I think your request was to go to the attorneys, but ultimately the state legislators would craft that. You've got to have a sponsor and you need to have to be Patty or Mark to do that. So I think we, we, I, I believe you're right, but we kicked it to them and I believe.
Well, we should be articulating that if it's unclear what our position is because, uh, you know, we need to articulate that to the county as well as our. State elected officials. Um, if there's any willingness at the county to give us a. A home rule on a bill like that, then we should be. Looking at that revenue source. I'd, I'd be surprised if there is, because it was hard enough getting a home rule on the, the other half set. So, but we, we should be articulating that for that extra half a million or 600,000 dollars of potential revenue. To fund our local government. Is there a consensus on that or should I make a motion?
I don't think you can especially.
Can't do it especially.
We can handle.
You can have a discussion on it later by all means.
You can make a motion, but it takes five. You can do it.
Is there five votes?
Well, I mean, why don't we, why don't we first? We just had an election cycle. We've got a new assemblyman coming in, we've got a new senator coming in. I think we, um, possibly look to get them here to sit down, talk to them about it. You know, and keep in mind they're two minority members and to be honest, they can promote the, the bill all they want. Get on the highest mountain they want and it's not going to go anywhere.
It's a home rule bill and they, they got the last one and it will go somewhere as long as we get the home rule from the county, so.
And they support it.
What'd that half penny look like?
600,000.
600,000.
I don't know if preempting is going to work at all, to be honest with you.
The county could do this themselves. They, they shared that for the first quarter of the year. And they could do it themselves, you know, now that, uh, they're aware of our situation if they wanted to.
Well, the. The reductions that we're looking at and. I don't think we're going to be looking any better next year is, is the result of their actions.
All right. There's a lot of.
Yeah, that, it's, it's not just.
Right staffing, if you saw my email, rather than understaffing, creating mountains of mountains. Definitely a part of it, so I think.
And it's 2.5 million dollars. That's the problem.
Probably over time it's not going to get there.
Do you have a solution? Put the numbers together, be interesting.
I just talked. I will.
Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
No.
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
No.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Jelloba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by interim city manager Andrea Smith.
So resolution establishing a public hearing for the 2023 preliminary general fund budget for the city of Augdensburg. Be resolved that the Augdensburg City Council hereby establishes a public hearing on the preliminary general fund budget. Of the city of Augdensburg for 2023. Said public hearing to be held at 6:00 PM on November 28th, 2022 in city council chambers, city hall.
I'll move that. Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Be it further resolved that the city clerk give notice of such public hearing by publication in the newspaper. So designated for the publication of legal notices at least seven days before the hearing date. Of the notice setting forth the time and place and describing the proposed resolution in summary form.
I'll move that.
I'll say that. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Counselor Riche?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Jelloba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Could we, uh, set up our, the public, um, work session? Our workshop sessions?
We have that on your agenda for Monday to discuss.
That's fine, or we could do it tonight so we can.
I'm ready for Monday. I've got a busy, lot of, lot of things going on, a lot of things in our.
Um, I will say that now that the council has approved the budget, it will be available on the city's website under the budget tab as a preliminary budget.
Thinking if anybody wants to reach out, works wants to work on this over the weekend instead of waiting till Monday, feel free to contact. We're working on it.
I have a, a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Mayor, I need a second, please.
All second.
Thank you.
All in favor? I, I opposed, adjourn.